I'd like to call, please say, Councilman in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion to approve the items on the agenda as submitted? I believe there's any additions.
So move, as submitted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Again, Ivy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we don't have any absences. We already had a work session. I have an opportunity to do the state of the city, and I'm not used to all these people here with pictures and cameras, so anyhow, I'm just used to Tim over there. So anyhow, it's a privilege to report to you on the state of affairs of this great city. We have a community that is thriving thanks to the continued commitment of our citizens, city employees, and elected officials. Even in these difficult economic times, we are seeing new investment by local businesses and housing value stabilization. In this address, I will review our current activities and outline our future priorities. Celine is in a good financial position. Our long-range financial plan shows a stable fund balance of approximately $2 million or 20 percent over the next five years. While some funding remains at risk, such as state revenue sharing, we believe that property values in our community have stabilized. We have adjusted employee benefits to be comparable with the private sector, and we'll be negotiating to have benefit parity for all labor groups. We have a viable plan to pay down our unfunded retirement liability over several years. The city has been able to maintain or militerate through the diligent work of city employees identifying opportunities for cost savings and revenue enhancement. This year, we complete our biannual citizen survey. The results can be found on our website, citioseline.org, under the City Council section. I am delighted to report that the city received very positive ratings compared to our benchmarks. We are always looking for opportunities for improvement and take your feedback very seriously. We utilize the survey results for our annual goal-setting process, which we have just completed. The City Council has had several work sessions to update our goals for next year in preparation for developing the budget. They will be formally adopted at the next council meeting and put on the city website. We have continued with the same overarching goals, which focus on enhancing our ability to continue as a successful 21st century city. The goals are: a vibrant downtown, maintain financial stability, upgrade infrastructure, proactive economic development, enhance communication, build community spirit, promote and sustain green initiatives, promote and develop sustainable green initiatives, and enhance our quality of life. Our downtown is the heart of our city, a place for residents and visitors to shop, eat, and play. The city has been participating in the Main Street, Michigan, Main Street program, learning about best practices and tools community use to further enhance this crucial area of our community. We had a successful summer concert series, which will be continued next year. A new initiative is being developed by community members for a winter concert series at the Stone Arch on Southian Arbor Street. I know everyone is looking forward to the opening of Mangiamo's by the Toramina family this next month. It will be a family Italian restaurant with a pizza oven, as their delicious ice cream will also be served. The unfinished development Village Marketplace continues to be a challenge to clean up. We have a default judgment against the developer and are looking at options to improve the aesthetics of the parcel. Goals for this next year include expanding our beautification efforts, continuing retail business attraction, and identifying funding for a community pavilion. Additionally, we will be working with the downtown stakeholders to develop an overlay district in the downtown. This will enable us to further improve the structural elements of the downtown through our zoning and site plan review process. Maintaining financial stability is of vital importance to our city, council, and staff. We recognize the importance of thoughtful investment in the city and have great respect for the fact that we are using your tax dollars. Over the last decade, we have made significant investments in capital projects, and we are positioned well for the future. We know that your decision to live and work in Celine is based on the value you get for your tax dollars. We do a broad-brush five-year financial document so we can be responsive to trends that affect us in a timely manner, adjusting our projected expenditures accordingly. Upgrading infrastructure is a continuous challenge for the city and is of vital importance to our quality of life and attractiveness as a community. Evaluating, programming, and implementing projects can be complex and costly. We are developing a capital improvements program report that will be available on our website when our budget process is complete in the spring. Last year, we reconstructed Willis Road, implementing the streets policy that we have developed. Our non-motorized plan is being implemented in segments. This year, we are working with a library on a link between Maple Road and Harris Street. We installed the illuminated crosswalk on Woodland Drive with assistance from grant money. We plan to identify a reliable funding stream for our transportation system as the current bond proceeds are rapidly disappearing. Proactive economic development will include all commercial businesses and infrastructure planning and events. We currently work with the Celine Area Chamber of Commerce as partners in the development of promotional events. We also work with Annabur Spark and the MEDC coordinating regular retention visits to our larger businesses. Additionally, we plan to develop a program that supports entrepreneurship by promoting business mentoring acting as virtual incubator space. The relationships we develop with our local businesses are of utmost importance to our future, and we hope they consider the city a partner in our mutual success. City council and staff are always looking for opportunities to improve communication. We have invested in two websites, an operational government type and events and promotional type. We learned from the survey results that most of you get city information from our quarterly FYI, which goes out in the water bills. However, the most timely information regarding city operations and activities will be found on our websites 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Civic engagement is crucial to the success of our community. Our multiple boards, commissions, and events, such as Summer Fest and Celtic Festival, are run by volunteers. In this time of shrinking budgets, we need you more than ever to get involved. Volunteering is a great way to give back, and you can do it for a one-time event or multiple activities. It is also a great way to make new friends and be part of something bigger than you. The city website has a volunteer page that allows you to contact the organizer for each event. Also, we will be hosting a volunteer table at future public events, so come on out, meet some new folks, and contribute. As a city, we have been identifying opportunities to promote and support sustainable practices addressing the wise use of our resources. We have had an energy audit completed and are implementing the suggestions for improvement. This next year, our goals are to expand the recycling program to commercial areas and public events. Through the Environmental Commission, we plan to expand educational offerings, such as the rain barrel making, assisting citizens in their commitment to conservation. Additionally, we plan to identify opportunities for the use of alternative energy programs that could be applicable to homes and businesses. Our final strategic goal, one that is impacted by all of the above goals, is enhancing the quality of life. City council, employees, and commissions are continually working on ideas that would provide a positive impact. Specifically, this year, we plan to address blighted areas, excess grant funding for cultural and recreation development, continue to provide tools to promote healthy living, develop a cultural diversity initiative with community organizations. We opened Ice Rink at Hennyfield in December and is being well-used. This fall, we look forward to visitors from both our sister city programs, Lindenburg, Germany, and Brooke and Wales. Host families are being recruited now if you would be interested in expanding your world to include other cultures. Our council is looking forward to an exciting year ahead. We have two new council members, Dean Hirba and Linda Terhar. They have been participating in our goal-setting and bring a fresh perspective to this council. Additionally, we have seasoned council members, Pat Ivy, Glenn Law, Brian Marl, and David Rhodes. I look forward to working with this council because of our strong commitment to serving you. In summary, your city government is working hard for you. We have an excellent quality of life, great schools, and a stable local economy due to community pride and participation. We hope to see you downtown this weekend at our first annual Winter Fest. Thank you for your continued support. Because of you, Celine is a great place to live, work, and play. And now, we're going to have Superintendent Scott Graen come up and talk about our schools.
I appreciate the opportunity to address the council and talk a little bit about an important ballot measure that's on the February 22, 2011 ballot. I'd also like to welcome to the podium Councilmember and Mayor pro town, Brian Marl, who is also serving as our community co-chair or community chair for the bond campaign and the Team Celine event and the Vote Yes campaign. And so, we will share the podium tonight and the microphone tonight as we talk a little bit about the project coming up. As I noted, it's on February 22, Tuesday, February 22, and it also has a $22 million bond extension. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the key projects associated with the endeavor, a little bit about the numbers, how the tax structure works because it's an extension, and then a little bit about the vote itself in the day. Based on the, it's a little bit easier to look at the pie graph on the screen versus the handout, given the color scheme, but this kind of breaks down the $22 million itself. About 74 percent, three-quarters of it, is targeted towards what we're calling critical needs: building infrastructure, several roof replacements, heating and cooling repairs and updates, energy-efficient updates, we're looking at some LED lighting systems. Again, so about $16 million of the $22 million is really targeted at those building-level projects. 10 percent, or about $2.2 million, is targeted towards technology, computer replacement and wireless internet access, about half and half in that regard, about $1 million. Really, it's a vision of the Celine Area School District to be able to provide a robust wireless internet connection for all of our students. And really, when you talk about our high school, in fact, it's about 1,800 students, and the vision is for all students to be able to have a wirelessly-enabled device in their hands and connected to the internet, so we need to provide for that opportunity. And then, it would entail some degree of computer replacement. Equipment, we are preparing to comply with the federal Healthy, Hungry, Free Kids Program as the federal government really revamped the National School Lunch Program in early December. And with that came some new mandates related to the types of meals that we're serving and the way they're prepared, and actually, we'll talk a little bit more about that later. Some security updates at a variety of our buildings, particularly our high school and also our elementaries, but the elementary security updates would be a part of our critical needs listed in the front. About 5 percent would go towards buses. We have a fleet that is aging, about 80 percent of our buses are 10 years old or older, and this bond proposal would call for three buses per year for four years for over about 12 overall. Some additional site work is called for in this project, pick-up and drop-off and building access areas. Of concern to the city in particular, we have an area on our current campus. As many of you know, we've pulled a lot of the traffic off of Woodland Drive trying to stack and maintain and hold as many of the vehicles picking up and dropping off students before and after school on our campus. We have a temporary solution. It's our intention to create a better solution for that. As part of that, it would mean a more direct senior center access coming in really from the one-room schoolhouse area and addressing that in that area, could be able to get to the quote-unquote "back" of our middle school but directly into the senior center as part of that reconfiguration and site work improvement. Would also mean a turn lane on Campus Parkway, and I'll touch on that. Of the site work, talking about traffic separation of cars and buses, we will continue to do that. You can't see in the upper picture the darkened, that's a typical morning at Heritage and Woodland, and you can't see there the cars that are lined up from there really all the way around to the one-room schoolhouse, and there's an opportunity to really improve that. We have a fair amount of land there to be able to move that traffic effectively and efficiently through without having it spill out onto the city streets, and we're in intention to make some significant improvements in that area. Proving entryways for security purposes, the Woodland Drive access again coming off by the one-room schoolhouse and being able to navigate kind of where the bus lot currently exists to be able to get directly there. And then, Campus Parkway Turn Lane. If you're familiar with our high school before and after school and trying to get to that facility, that's a, Campus Parkway in front of the school is a two-lane road. If you can picture at the bottom of that graphic, you can see the car coming around the corner there. As vehicles come into the building and want to turn left into the west entry point or the pool entry point, they stop in traffic and block all eastbound traffic as they wait for traffic to clear that's coming from the east. We are proposing, and you can kind of see developing a third lane in front of the school allowing for traffic to get to a middle turn lane, and eastbound traffic could then pass through. This would allow not only for traffic to stack and turn left into the west area, it also allow for traffic to stack and turn into the front area, which is kind of where we encourage our parent pick-up and drop-off area to be near the flagpoles, and certainly allows our buses that need to get to the east side of the facility and the vehicles that need to park on the east side or even travel on to Harvest Elementary to get through effectively without having this stacking that occurs. One of the things that we've seen that happens, the stacking creates a delay, students and parents alike tend to make, you know, hasty judgments, hasty choices, trying to cut across with traffic coming, and we've had a few issues there. It's our intention to allow that to kind of hopefully improve the flow and allow people to travel safely to and from the high school before and after school. Brian, do you want to touch on that?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Graen. Develops secured entrances at all four of our district elementary buildings, and they are listed, they are pictured, excuse me, in sequential order, the oldest being Pleasant Ridge Elementary, followed by Heritage, then Woodland Meadows, and the newest being Harvest Elementary out in Pittsfield Township. And what we mean by develop secure entry points is at all of our buildings, and Pleasant Ridge presents the most, what euphemism would we use here, Mr. Graen, the most challenges, excuse me, and that is, we do not have secured entry points really at any of those buildings. In fact, at Pleasant Ridge, the public enters the building from either the north or south, and they're not immediately directed to the office. And so, I mean, I don't mean to demagogue this issue, but if someone had harm intended to either a student or faculty member, they could easily enter the building unevaded. At Heritage, Harvest, and Woodland Meadows, they are directed immediately to the office, but you see in that lower left-hand or right-hand cornered picture, excuse me, Harvest, and we, Mr. Graen refers to that as the thin red line, and that's all that deters somebody from entering the building. And so, obviously, that's not much of an obstacle, and there needs to be some reconfiguration done at all four of our elementary buildings to sort of remedy this problem of people potentially being able to get into the facilities, you know, without someone stopping them. In addition to the secured entry points, Mr. Graen, I know you can speak more knowledgeably about HVAC and tech improvements. Do you want to touch on those briefly, and then I'll continue on with this list?
Yeah, one of the things, particularly at the, actually, each of these buildings, really, we need to come up with a system or developing a system to better address the heating and cooling process from a technical side. We have things called actuators that have started to, are starting to go, and as well as we need to unify the system, we have a series of different control systems in place in those buildings, and it's our intention with new systems to find a common system and implement that so that we can effectively and remotely better control the heating and cooling system in each of those buildings.
Do the electrical and energy?
Yeah, the electrical and energy updates are somewhat similar. Harvest, it would not require much at Harvest, but the other three elementaries we are looking to implement, not only exterior LED lighting to allow for some significant cost savings, it's a little costly to get involved with it, and that's where the capital dollars would be important, but it would have a significant return on investment rather quickly. And then, also interior lighting systems that allow, most buildings now, including Harvest, are built with motion sensors to make sure that when the rooms are unoccupied, the lights will go off. In fact, at Harvest, sometimes if students are quietly reading, the lights will go off, which is fine with us because we know we're effectively using that and we're saving energy.
Okay. The kitchen and health equipment is one of my favorite ones, and this directly relates to what Mr. Graen talked about in his opening comments, which are, there are some new federal mandates relating to food nutrition that come with a cost, and suffice it to say, the cost wasn't subsidized or provided by our friends at the federal government. So this is a classic example of an unfunded mandate. And essentially, one of the components of the new federal legislation requires more nutritious, healthy lunches, which I don't think we would, anybody would argue about the merits of that. Unfortunately, there's not the dollars to support it. And so, what we are talking about doing in all of the kitchens, not just the elementary buildings, is installation of comb bean ovens? I finally got that one right. Essentially, it is an oven that produces a food product that tastes like it was fried, but it's really steamed. So we envision essentially providing a French fry, although it wouldn't be a French fry because it wouldn't be deep-fried, but it would taste very much like a product that was deep-fried. So it tastes good, students want to partake of them, but it doesn't have adverse effects to their body or physical well-being. And in addition, some of the other equipment in all of our buildings, especially some of the older buildings, the ones that predate 1990, just needs some overall equipment upgrades and reinvestment, so we plan on doing that. Technology upgrades, I think Mr. Graen talked sufficiently about that during his opening comments. And then, finally, the last bullet point on this page is roof repairs. Some of the roofs have just exhausted their lifespan, thinking particularly of, I believe, Pleasant Ridge and Heritage, and they need to be replaced. And obviously, the longer you go without replacing a roof that is leaking, the more expensive it will become, so it's very prudent, very logical, and quite frankly, conservative to do it now. Just press Enter, Mr. Graen, or Return?
Spacebar.
Spacebar.
I'll touch a little bit on the high school, middle school, and Liberty. One of the, these are the three of our, two of our oldest buildings. Currently, Liberty School is now the oldest building owned by the district and operated by the district. And because of the nature of that facility, as many of you know, over the last couple of years, we've had some committees look at what to do with Liberty School, what to do with Union School. The initial committee at Liberty really said the school needs to really look at that facility and its use long-term. Because of its location on a campus area, we are going to continue to have bus and school vehicle traffic on it. Selling or leasing that building did not make a whole lot of sense at whole, as well as it's a very large building structurally, it's a single-story building. But now that we're down there, we've relocated several operations, our administrative offices, our alternative program, our youth adult program, we've implemented a Liberty Club, a community-based program at that facility. It was largely passed over in the last several bonds because it did not have a defined use moving forward. Where in the past, we've replaced windows and doors and such at other areas, we did not do that at Liberty. The big issue right now is while the boilers have been reworked and would not need to be replaced, they do, would need to be converted. We currently operate steam system there, and that's no longer efficient or effective. We would convert that to hot water. It would require almost a complete plumbing switchover because those steam pipes are about ready, well, many of them are already in disrepair. In addition to some of the things we've talked about at the other buildings, many of them would occur as well. Some security updates at our high school. Our high school is constantly being used by the community. It's a great facility. If you've been there on the evening or weekend, you know there's, there are always activities going on. We need to look at developing a scenario that meets with fire code approval and also can allow us to really kind of cordon off sections of the building. There are large areas in that building that at various times are unoccupied and unsupervised, and it's our intention to develop a system that allows us to kind of cordon off the building. However, if there was an emergency situation, these gates would go up and allow everyone to exit the building appropriately. Brian, do you want to touch anything else?
No, actually, finish this slide.
The, in addition, there's the Michigan, state of Michigan compliant bus wash. As you know, we are working together on our stormwater retention permit, and I appreciate the city's support in that. However, we've been noted that we are no longer allowed to wash our buses outside, and we need to develop an interior wash system for that, and this would allow us to do that. We do by law have to maintain clean buses that are, our school name and lights are clearly visible, and I certainly want to have clean buses, but now to be able to wash it inside quickly and efficiently. This is not an automated, but we're talking about a large area to just spray the buses off.
But another example of an unfunded mandate from our friends in Lansing.
So, here's the numbers. One of the things that I really want to make sure I were able to effectively explain, and I would ask that you can do, this is an extension, and the reason it's an extension is because these are qualified bonds. We presented a proposal to the state of Michigan to review. They reviewed it and essentially have said that there's enough equity in the Celine Area School District to cover the cost of these bonds, and because that, because of that, they will essentially back these bonds with the school bond loan fund. This allows us to sell the bonds immediately, or in theory, if it were to pass, we'd sell them in the summertime, generate the capital at that point, and then the state would say, okay, we understand that the community is going to be paying these off, and it essentially allows us to keep and cap our current debt retirement rate at 7 mils. And so, moving forward, it would remain at 7 mils. Now, if you look at the graph, and between the red line that is slightly to the left and the blue line, that is actually where the, where the revenue would come from. That's where the $22 million exists. And as of this afternoon at 2:30, we conducted a swap, which I'm not going to get into, but essentially, we were able to trade out some previous bonds, and then we're able to eliminate a year. So as my presentation yesterday was, this bond would extend it from 2025 to 2031, we can now say that this bond would extend it from 2024 to 2030. Interestingly, 2030 was the initial payoff date or the 7 mil drop date for the Project 2000, and we've been able to, over time, the board has been able to continue to refinance and shorten that timeframe, so we're hopeful to be able to do that again. It's important for community members to understand that regardless of whether or not this measure is approved or not approved, the 7 mil rate will be in place now from now until 2024, so we have 13 years at 7 mils, and then it will begin to decline. If it were to pass, it would go from now until 2030 and then begin to decline. If you look at the graph next to it, you can see kind of the breakdown of the county. If you look at our county peers, one, our millage rate, our debt millage rate is relatively low compared to our county schools, and also, if you look, every other school district in Washtenaw County has passed a bond issue since Celine Area Schools. In particular, Lincoln, Chelsea, Manchester, Mylan, and Dexter have passed bond issues in the last three years, and those bond issues have been largely used similar to what we're asking, none of for the construction of facilities, but for the repair, maintenance, and protection of the investment those communities have made. And really, we are coming forward to the Celine Area School voters asking for that same opportunity. It's important that the quality of our schools is maintained, and this is one measure we can do.
I would also add, my friends, as it relates to this slide, the bottom figure is somewhat misleading because you're seeing the $124 million bond sale that was authorized in 2000. To refer back to some previous slides, we're talking about, we're asking the voters to authorize the school district to sell $22 million worth of bonds. So that figure is substantially less than almost all of the other schools that are listed on that chart, and as Mr. Graen indicated, we are, every other school district in the county has passed a bond extension or the sale of additional bonds since we have in 2000. So this isn't anything new or out of the ordinary or unusual, no one's trying to bamboozle or hoodwink you. This is for a critical need, and every other district in the county recognizes this and their voters have accordingly.
I'm talking a little bit about why now. One of the things in Celine School, we have great pride in our facilities, just as the city should. We look at our facilities and know they're, they're really in proper physical order right now. We have critical needs that are facing us within the next two years, and this is what we want to do, is protect the $202 million in fixed assets that the school possesses. So again, you know, really, today's bond issue, or this February's bond issue is about protecting that $200 million-plus investment that our community has already made. This is the last opportunity for no increase in the tax levy in February. As I mentioned before, these are qualified school bonds. The process for being qualified is related to a five-year rolling property value average. We know, as Mayor Driscoll talked about in our State of the City, while property values have stabilized, stabilization of the property values is excellent. It does not allow us, though, to qualify for the school bond loan fund moving forward. Once our May assessments hit for 2011 and 2006 goes off of our calculation, we lose the opportunity to sell qualified school bonds for, we're assuming, three to five years based on the calculations that we've been doing. And so, really, the reality is this is the last opportunity to look at an extension versus an immediate increase. And to that end, we've done analysis of if we were to put the same $22 million measure on the 2012 February ballot, it would equate to a .55 mil increase or about a $68 increase per $250,000 in tax value. The same measure, two years out, 2013, we're looking at a 1.12 mil increase for our debt retirement, and those would be immediate increases. The reality is if extension doesn't pass now, in February, the likelihood of a tax increase that would immediately hit our voters is very, very unlikely. So from our standpoint, and I know the board is articulated a concern, that essentially, there's a window that's closing, and that the opportunity to protect the investment we have will close for a series of years, and the ramifications of that and the risks of that are significant. There's a low cost of capital opportunity still out there for us, there's the possibility of some additional reimbursable interest from the federal government, and interest rates on municipal bonds are relatively low. In fact, they had been at about a 40-year low, and they're starting to creep back up. On the agenda for the February 8 meeting for our Board of Education is to strengthen our local preference policy in indicating many of these projects, although $22 million is largely individual projects, are small and well within the ability of some of our local contractors, and it would be our intention to, whenever possible, keep that local. Keeps general funds in the classroom, as we talked about, quality schools are the, really, I feel, the bedrock of a quality community, and Celine has been a quality community that supported the schools, and now is the time for us really to focus on protecting the system that we have in place. Through the technology purchases would allow us to address our strategic framework. We do need to be preparing 21st century learners and 21st century leaders, and this would help in that goal. And then, ultimately, it's about attracting and retaining families and businesses, and the people that move into our district and move into our city, you know, with school-aged children, without fail, mention that the schools is what provided them with the interest in this community. And so, for us to look at the facilities we have and to continue to maintain them is critical, and to be able to do it in such a way that does not increase our out-of-pocket costs, I really, you know, I applaud the board for trying to think proactively and get this on the ballot so the community has a choice of an extension over an increase.
I would just, those are some facts and figures that indicate just how great our school district is. I would just say in summation that, to sort of echo some of the comments just made by Superintendent Grayden, this bond proposal directly relates to the strategic plan adopted by the school district. It will not increase your taxes. It is not a tax increase. It is a tax extension effective in 2024. This is the last opportunity to do it because these bonds will no longer be qualified by the state's school bond loan fund. That's the correct use of the word, thank you. In, in addition, and lastly, but probably, well, no less profound, like Mr. Grayden said, the data, the statistics is overwhelming and very clear. When schools do well, communities do well, economies do well. And if people, if our children are going to compete in the 21st century, they need a quality education. That doesn't just include college and/or a four-year university, but also includes outstanding and excellent educational services from grades K through 12. So, we think that this is really imperative. You know, if it's not done now, it will cost us more in the future, and it will absolutely jeopardize the type of quality education that we provide for our students because the dollars will have to come out of the general fund and adversely affect instruction. So, with that, I don't know if you have anything more, Mr. Grayden? We're happy to entertain questions if you have them, and if you talk to residents of the school district who do have questions and concerns, both Mr. Grayden and I would be happy to meet with them, and you're welcome to give them our email or our phone number, and we'll address any questions and concerns they may have.
I do.
Yep.
Are you having, you're having public presentations right on this proposal?
Yes, we will be having two community forums on this proposal. The presentation that I just did is also available on our website. If you go to the Selenia School website, there's a hornet that says "bond extension" around. If you click on the hornet, not only is, is this presentation screencasted there that you can, can listen to my voice, you might want to do that, you know, later, but the, also, all the information about the bond, the bond proposal itself, some frequently asked questions, and more details for, for the voters. And then, on February 1st at 9:30 in the morning, we'll be conducting a community forum at Liberty School in the Media Center. Again, that's February 1st at 9:30 a.m. And then also, on February 7th at 6:30 p.m. in the Liberty School Media Center, we'll be conducting that as well. I know, you know, Mr. Marl and myself have been out talking to a variety of community groups, and I do thank the council for allowing me to come tonight and, and Mr. Marl to be able to talk to you about this very important issue.
Yeah, we totally support, well, I personally totally support this, and I just want to make sure that you have every opportunity to approach the public and inform, and inform them about the importance of this. And I guess one of the questions that I don't really see here, and I'm wondering if people are asking you, is if this doesn't pass, what are, what would be the ramifications?
Well, you know, there's, there's essentially, the ramifications are twofold. There's a one-year ramification where, when it comes particularly to things around the technology and the buses, we've been delaying those purchases. Our bus fleet is significantly older, well, 80% of our bus fleet is 10 years old or older. While our mechanics do an outstanding job, Dexter has no buses over five years old. Mylan, Manchester, one or two buses over five years old, and none, neither, none, none of those districts have any over 10 years old. We need to purchase things like buses. There are some new technology that we're going to need to purchase to be able to continue to provide what we want to provide. Those dollars are going to come out of the general fund, and it'll have a ramification in terms of the cuts necessary to do that. So, I think the time of us being able to say, well, we're going to figure out a way to, to keep this from impacting the classroom and adjust, and things like, you know, state-level bias and things like that, those days are over. It's going to start hurting. And ultimately, when you talk about Celine relative to our, our county peers, you know, if we start cutting to be able to purchase the types of things that other districts are using capital dollars for, that'll have a long-term, real negative impact on, on how Celine is able to provide an education versus some of our older neighboring communities that also have quality schools.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks a lot.
Thank you for the time, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, next on the agenda is Chief Bunton, who's going to be talking about our police report closure rate.
Yes.
Exciting stuff.
I handed out some material before the meeting for each of you. Basically, last October, anniver.com posted the closure rates on, on crimes for police agencies in Washtenaw County, with Celine being next to the worst closure rate. I knew intuitively when I looked at that, that that wasn't correct. We were doing something wrong. So, I called a staff meeting, and we got together and looked at everything, and we, in fact, were doing something wrong. When we went with our new computer system, went digital from the paperwork system that we used to have, we used to file the MICERS, which is Michigan Incident Crime Reports. We used to file those manually. Now, they're filed automatically by Clemis. And we were closing our reports very diligently. However, we were closing them in an administrative closure and not in a closure that was getting sent to Clemis. So, we went back through 2009 and actually 2010, and we relooked at all of our cases and relooked at the closures utilizing the closure codes that the state of Michigan provides, and our closure rate actually for 2009 is 51.4% instead of the 24%. And then when we went through 2010, was 52.4% closure rate, which could actually end up being a larger closure rate by the time we're done. We have some more reports that are still being submitted under 2010. So, it could actually be more than that. Certainly won't be less. We found out what we were doing wrong, and we instituted some policies and procedures to keep that from happening again, and we do now have a set of checks and balances for that purpose. We also had a meeting with all of the officers to impress upon the officers how important this is and how important it is for them to do the proper job when they do their closures. We dealt with, with MICERS up in Lansing, who told us, we're not alone on this. There are many departments calling them with the same issues. Clemis said that there were a lot of departments utilizing the wrong closure area on the report, just like we were. So, we've resolved the problem. 51% is, is a very good closure rate for crimes. There's many of these crimes that will never be closed, like drive-offs at gasoline, at gas stations that nobody sees the car or the person that did it, and things like that. There's a lot that'll never be closed. It's a very credible rate to get up over 50%. We are now the second highest in, in Washtenaw County. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Any council members have questions of Chief Bunton? Oh, thank you for the update.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next on the agenda, we have citizen comments under the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. To anybody that would like to speak? I understand that there's a gentleman here that has submitted a request for flags. Is that you?
Yes.
Great. Glad that you came today. Pull down the mic a little bit, just pull it forward, there you go, so we can hear you.
Hello. My name is Brendan Owens, and I'm a sixth grader at Celine Middle School, and I am participating in the French-American Student Exchange Program. And eight American, eight French students and two teachers will be coming here from Carignan, France, as part of that program from February 16th to March, through March 7th, 2011, and to welcome them and show our hospitality as a city. Those of us participating in the program from the middle school were wondering if the city would fly the French flag at the Four Corners downtown during their stay here. The program has the flags, and I can deliver them a week before they arrive. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. That would be great. We'll be voting on it tonight. Okay. Okay, thank you. So, any other citizen comments? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which that item of the flags is on the consent agenda. I don't know, maybe we should, we need to wait until the, I was thinking about pulling it off, but... So, it's on the, currently on the consent agenda to approve flying the French flags. And normally, we vote on all the items on the consent agenda at the same time. So, I'll leave that on there so that Brendan doesn't need to wait until the end of the evening. Following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, over at the request of any citizen or council member. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to adopt as submitted.
Move Mr. Rhodes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Har. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? motion carries. So, Mr. Owens, we just voted to approve, he's putting the flags up at the Four Corners, so if you want to bring them into City Hall, that would be great, and we'll make sure they get taken care of, okay? Thank you for speaking. Under New Business, we have item 1115, the National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program. This is a motion to acknowledge the January 17th, 2011 memo from City Manager Campbell to approve and endorse or not approve the Utility Service Partners Incorporated Service Line Warranty Program endorsed by NLC, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute a contract with Utility Service Partners Incorporated to provide this service to our residents. If required, after review and approval of the contract by the city attorney, to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the marketing agreement with Utility Service Partners Private Label Incorporated for marketing of this program after review and approval of the city attorney. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve and endorse, authorize and authorize.
Move Mr. Ivey. Do we have a second?
Support.
Second, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Campbell, do you, can you talk about this program?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few months ago, brought to our attention through the National League of Cities, whom we are a member, partnering with a group called Utility Service Partners Incorporated, providing essentially insurance coverage, if you will, for repair replacement of a failed either sanitary sewer lead or water service line. Just for history, you may recall, City of Celine policy is property owner is responsible for both the sanitary sewer lead and the water service line from the mains to the property. So, we worked, myself, Jeff Fordyce, DPW Director, worked with Utility Service Partners Incorporated, and came up with possible or proposal to be considered by the city, and as the, the motion talks about endorsing, it's not, it's not a program that the, the city is not going to require very minimal time for staff, providing them information, addresses, that type of thing. But as far as, once the program is, they take the program, they contact residents to see if they're interested, basically, in buying an insurance policy for if their, if their water, water service line fails, or their sanitary sewer lead fails, that it would be covered for replacement as opposed to coming out of their own pocket. It's a 24/7, there's, and they also, the other thing, as, as I point out in my memo, no cost, the city participates. They will use local contractors to perform the work at reasonable rates, and then by endorsing the program, the city would or could generate additional income with an annual royalty, 10%. I'll address that in a moment. USP pays for the repairs directly, not the resident, so it doesn't, the resident doesn't have to worry about being reimbursed for something. All repairs performed to local code. Customers have access to a 24/7 customer service repair hotline, and USP is 100%, 100% responsible for the program, marketing, billing, customer service, and performing all repairs. As far as this, this royalty, some communities utilize it as a revenue generator, 10%. However, the city could, if they chose not to take the royalty, would knock 10, approximately 50 cents off of the monthly rate, and they do, they call them campaigns. So, they will, my understanding from the conversations I've had with them, their first campaign, they would be promoting the policy for the, the water service line, and then they, once they would, in a few months later, they would do another, they'd do two or three campaigns a year typically. So, they would do, in a few months, they would do a campaign to promote the sanitary sewer lead program, and it's about 550, let's see. The campaign price for a resident to enroll in the external water line warranty will be $5.50 per month. Campaign price for a resident to enroll in the external sewer line warranty will be $5.95. If it is determined that the city would forego the 10% royalty, the price for the external water line would be reduced to $5 per month, and then reduced to $5.45 per month for the sewer line. So, it's, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, there, there are no other, and it's a non-exclusive, I talk about non-exclusive, the only contract is, is that it's a non-exclusive agreement for marketing to utilize our logo and say that the city endorses this project. It's non-exclusive, so that means if, if another company comes around to do this, then we'd be able to do that as well. But currently, and I'm not aware of, of other companies that provide this type of protection and this policy. We did, we also, we asked a number of questions, and we also, we asked for some references, and those are in your packets. As you can see, all the references are very positive. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that I'm able.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Do we, council, any questions? Mr. Rhodes?
Comment first, and then a question. I was really pleased when I, when I saw this possibility last November, I think it was, in the NLC newsletter, and brought it up for staff to consider to see if it was as good as what it appeared to be in the newsletter article, and it does seem like it was that way. One question that I had was whether or not a resident could sign up for just the water and just the sewer, or if they had to do both together once they were both offered.
Correct. My understanding is that they don't have to do both, they can do one or the other or both.
Very good. That should alleviate some of the heartburn that we went through last year with residents who had water line problems.
Mr. Ivey.
Thank you, Mayor. As mover of this motion, I strongly support it. I think those of us on council a couple of years ago recall the frustration and dismay expressed by citizens who discovered that they would become responsible for the repair bills to their sewer line or, or water lines. And sometimes, those bills were in excess of $1,000. I read in the material that was handed out prior to our meeting that 96% of people that respond on a survey about this program say that their image of the city is enhanced because the city has given them an option for insurance and guards against surprise cost that they might incur. Although there is less than 10% of citizens that participated, I still think this is a worthy initiative, and I applaud the city manager for putting it before us today, and I urge my colleagues to support this. Thank you.
So, further questions? So, I asked you before about the, I don't know what we call it, the 10%, what is it called?
Royalty?
Royalty. When would that decision be made, whether or not we would be to use, you know, accessing a royalty or not? Is that something we should be discussing tonight?
I would, I would think so, yes, to move forward, this forward, because they would want to start.
Okay.
Once they did start with it, they'd want to make sure that they were going down the same direction as opposed to changing course.
So, I guess the first question would be, is the majority of council in favor of actually using this program? It sounds like yes, because I don't hear any negative comments in the discussion. So, the next question would be, would we want to participate in the royalty program or not? And I guess I bring that up because I personally don't agree with it. I feel that this is a service we're offering our citizens and residents, and it shouldn't be to our benefit. So, I don't know if we want to have a discussion around that, but that's my perspective. So, Mr. Marl.
I would strongly echo your sentiments, Mayor. I think this is a very valuable program, and the goal should be to provide our citizens with the service at as low a cost as humanly possible, and I don't think it would be, I don't think it's good that we would be profiting off of that. So, I strongly endorse your comments and would suggest that we, we opt against the royalty.
Because it is my understanding that we won't have any cost, correct, with administering this?
Right, right. And to be initial, right, initial, that gets a few things set up, but very minimal upfront, and then after that, no cost.
Mr. Rhodes, did you have a comment?
I was going to support the same general thing, in that typically, if, if we had costs involved in administering a program, we would institute a fee to recover those costs, but since we don't in this case, I agree with the previous statements.
Mr. Gerbuck.
And by not collecting a royalty fee, we're not endorsing the program more than just, I mean, the way this reads, it says that if we would generate... just, I mean, the way this reads, it says that if we would generate the additional income of a royalty, then they would be able to use us as an endorsement and everything. Are we still agreeing to that?
Correct. The, the marketing agreement language, again, as I mentioned earlier, the only agreement, contract, if you will, is for the endorsement to allow them to utilize the city logo and their literature that they send out.
Okay.
So, it would still be-
So, it is not tied to the royalty?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there further discussion? Okay, so do we need to call that out of the motion, or is this in sufficient direction for you?
I was going to say, as mover of the motion, I would support waiver of the royalties.
Okay, so we're going to add that as an amendment to the motion?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Mr. Rhodes, a second, or would you be?
I would, I would second that, as long as that waiver is reflected in a 10% decrease in the monthly rates.
Okay. Does everybody understand that we, what we added to the motion? Was added to the motion to not take the 10% royalty? And to lo, and, and as part of that, that would lower the cost to the resident?
Is that, is that added on immediately following the last sentence, Mayor?
Yes. Further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 1116, this is agreement with County Road Commission, emergency fueling of vehicles. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 14, 2011 memo from Police Chief Button, to approve or not approve emergency fueling access agreement between the Washington County Road Commission and the Celine Police Department for emergency fueling of vehicles, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute said agreement as approved by the city attorney. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve and authorize.
Second.
Rhodes, second. Mr. Gearbox. To approve and authorize, discussion. Mr. Chief Button, would you like to?
The Washington County Homeland Security Task Force, which I'm a part of, for about the past two years, has been working on this agreement. Homeland Security monies have purchased generators for the road commission, and as a caveat, when we negotiated that, we negotiated the clause in there where they would provide fuel in the event that we couldn't get fuel anyplace else. So, this has been a long time coming, I don't anticipate we'll use it often, but if we ever have to, it will, it'll definitely be a very valuable resource for us.
Any questions from council for Chief Button? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this motion? Not all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 1117, 123.net.in is the lease for the use of cities' water towers. This would be in a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 13, 2011 memo from City Manager Campbell, to approve or not approve the wireless internet agreement between the City of Celine and 123.net Incorporated for exclusive rights to 123.net to install, operate, and maintain its equipment on the cities' water towers or city-owned buildings at no expense to the city for a two-year period at an annual rate of $1,100 per tower, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute said agreement after review and approval by the city attorney. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve and authorize.
Rhodes? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You all may recall, remember 2020 Communications, a number of years ago, working on wireless Washington, and having, actually in 90, 2007, I'm sorry, entered into an exclusive agreement to put their equipment on our water towers to provide wireless internet service. And that, as you may recall from the news, the last couple of years, there have been some hiccups and bumps in the road for that, and, and my, the actual lease, it was a two-year lease, expired the end of my first year, and took a little bit of time, sort of my, my fault, but we started, finally started working with 2020 again to try and re-sign that. Few, few hiccups there, but we were working with them, and then beginning of, I think it was 2010, and also Dominic Seraf from 123.net is here as well, and anyway, I worked with, with 123.net, they were in the process of purchasing 2020, and they wanted to sign, renew the lease, and we had a little bit information, trying to get some information, but they, step back a little bit, 2020 had not paid '09 or 2010 lease payments, so $1,100 for each tower for $2,200. As soon as I informed 123.net, they immediately, they brought it up for the two years, so they paid $4,400 right up front, still working on the lease language. Finally, this summer, we were able to sit down staff with, with Dominic, and hear exactly what it is they're doing, and I'll turn it over to him in a second here to get a little more detail, but, so we worked on, through the fall, again, they have newer, more efficient, more up-to-date equipment, and it is, I believe it's, the new equipment is all, is all up on the downtown one, and then the new, and then the older equipment has been removed. We had talked to him, there was a little bit of misunderstanding, miscommunication, because we wanted to get, we will have our engineering firm, Dixon Engineering, whom we use to help us with our water towers, to evaluate it, and, and just to make sure that everything's okay. And so, we would still, if, if the city council approves this, we would still do that, to make sure everything is properly installed, and there's no, no liability to, to our towers. So, with that, having said that, just a little bit also of background, and then I'll turn it over to Dominic, if you want to come up and kind of go through a little bit, a little more detail, but, but they're more of a, they're, they're a fee-based, so service, more commercial industrial-type customers, and we're also, as you see in the contract, similar terms, actually better improved service that we would have had under 2020, as far as to city facilities, for free 1 megabyte service, which, which certainly, I think, certainly has a solid value to it for us, for our, because we currently use T1 lines, but we also, they have another, one of the support documentations you have in the packet is a list of where they have some of their equipment already, the Renn Center, for instance, and there's a couple in Ann Arbor, and Troy, yeah, Madison, top of Troy, Tower Plaza in Ann Arbor, American Center in Southfield, and as I mentioned, the Renn Center Detroit, Oakland Town Center in Pontiac, the 777 building in Ann Arbor, and the tower in Celine. I think there might be, you have another tower too, so, but, but in any case, we called, what we called customers that utilize their service, their internet service, all very high marks. We were only able to get in contact with one person as far as one that has their equipment installed, the Renn Center, very pleased. So, with that, I will turn, and if anyone has any questions for me, I would turn it over to Dominic to really get into the nuts and bolts and the details of what 123.net does.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Campbell? Shoot, Mr. Seraf.
Okay. I brought a couple documents here, just to pass out amongst the council members. I want to thank everybody for having, having us here on such short notice. So, just want to give everybody a brief background on what, what it is that, that we do. So, our company is, you know, we are a wireless internet service provider, we started in Southfield, Michigan, actually, I don't know what's going on here, maybe it's loose. Need to get somebody vertigo. Anyhow. So, this is not working, so. Sorry, maybe I should just not do that. Well, I can do without the slides, so I guess I'll just close this. Okay, so 123net, we're a CLAC, which is actually a competitive local exchange carrier. We also have the ability to provision services through telephone lines, through, in AT&amp;T and Verizon areas, in addition to having the wireless network, that is kind of a newer upstart thing. We, we did acquire all the assets of 2020 and the Wireless Washington program last year. What we've been doing since that time is basically, you know, a lot was written about the fact that it, you know, the Wi-Fi wasn't very successful, and, you know, we all know where that's been, and not a lot was written about the quality of what was actually put up. We've, 123net's replaced almost literally every single component that was ever installed by 2020 Communications. We've spent about, you know, on those two Celine towers, about $50,000 to $60,000 in infrastructure updates so far. What we're looking to do here is, we're going to start, we want to start offering home internet service and also bandwidth for businesses. You know, you guys are in a Verizon Frontier area, which, I don't know if you're familiar, like compared to what we deal with, with AT&amp;T.
Okay.
We actually-
It's a problem.
Yeah, okay, so-
We're very aware.
We know where you're going, okay. So, let's put it to you this way, 123net will sell a T1 to anybody in your area today for about $600, and our cost is about $500 on it, okay? We'll sell a wireless T1 for about $180, okay, to a business, huge advantage. I mean, that's, that's cheaper than, you know, you can get it from AT&amp;T, you know? So, just to give you an idea. We also are, we're not really a residential company, but we are kind of continuing that tradition out here in some of these areas, so we are going to offer, in a couple of months, residential product with WiMAX, which is actually 4G wireless technology adapted for home use, so, you know, all competitively priced, you know, around cable, cable internet prices. In addition, of course, you know, Todd and I came to an agreement that we would give out, you know, five free 1-meg connections, you know, to the local Celine municipalities, however they wish to distribute that is, you know, entirely their business, so we just will come out and do those. We would charge install costs, I believe, I don't know if I mentioned that in the contract, but we, you know, the service is free for you guys. And, you know, all we're really asking is just to uphold the lease and, you know, allow us to continue to operate. We, we do top-notch work, you kind of see the, the locations that we're on, you know, I'm sure if you were to call all those company, you know, all the property managers, they would tell you that we are a very tremendous asset to whatever we choose to locate, and seeing your water tower there amongst those big buildings kind of gives you an idea how we feel about Celine, because it is the only water tower that we have that's in a Verizon area, and we feel it's very, it can be competitive for us, so we kind of feel that it, it made sense to go ahead and do something that we don't usually do on a water tower, which is build out a full, you know, array of technology and offer it to the citizens.
Can we make our downtown wireless outside?
Well, here's, here's what I can do. I can't do what James McFarland tried to do, okay? I can't give everybody Wi-Fi for free, but-
Well, I know you've got to make a living, but one of those five sites could be downtown.
Well, yeah, see, see, what you guys can do is you can take my, you can take our wireless connections, and, see, what we're doing is we can provide backhaul, okay? We've got enough bandwidth on the top of the water towers to literally power everybody in the city right now, that's how much capacity we have. So, the question is, how do we get that to the end user? That's the hard part. So, you could take those five connections, and we could string together, you know, some mesh networking technology along the streets of Celine and deliver Wi-Fi to a lot of people. You know, you put five nodes wouldn't necessarily do the whole city, but, you know, with creative thinking, you could, you could definitely use that, you know, to backhaul Wi-Fi nodes, you know? So, there, you could definitely use it for that purpose.
Well, if they came through the city portal, I was, I'm like, you know, I know there's a lot of shops downtown, the coffee shops all have Wi-Fi right now.
Yeah.
But it would be nice to be able to have something for the outside areas. You know, a lot of communities are providing that now, so.
Yeah, there's definitely low-cost ways to do it, you know, like one of the good examples you guys could, you know, maybe look at is like the wireless IPSI guy, they're using this product, it's called Meraki, it's a really low-cost unit that kind of really easy to put up, you know, you can put it up on the telephone poles, and, I mean, the whole way that the 2020 thing was done wasn't right, it, it just wasn't designed to work properly, and that, you know, and that's nobody's fault here, it's just that if you do it right, you can get a lot more use out of it, you know, for a lot less cost.
So, how, did you buy all their stuff in the county?
Yeah.
So, where else are you?
So, we're, in this county, we're, you know, we did, we moved, we changed a lot of things, like, for example, they weren't on the Tower Plaza, we're actually, that's a full WiMAX site now, but we're on the 777 building, SIO Tower, Sylvan Tower, Manchester Tower, we've got a couple real little ones like Cobblestone Farm, I've never even seen it, but a couple other little spots like that, and then both the Celine Towers.
Okay.
So, that's our little, that's our network, and-
Does any council members have any questions? Mr. Ivey.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Seraf. There was a wireless internet agreement that was included with City Manager Campbell's memo on this subject, and I don't believe it's your signature on the agreement, it appears to be the operations manager, but I wonder if you, before council, could confirm that the costs of having an outside engineering firm analyze the specifications and the equipment that you intend to install or that you have already installed, that those costs will be borne by your company and not by the city?
Yes, yeah, I think, I, I thought that was in, in the contract, but it-
It is in the contract, however, I do not, I have it highlighted right here.
Okay.
But I, I do not want to leave the chamber today until I hear from you that, yes, you agreed to that, or you will agree to that, or your manager will.
Yeah.
And, and I have a follow-up to that. What if our outside engineering firm discovers that there is some problem with equipment that has already been installed? What happens then?
Well, I suppose in that case, we, you know, we would be back to the drawing board, but, you know, we, what we did, kind of, just to give you an idea of what, what we did, is mostly, we haven't added anything new to the tower so far, we've, we've exchanged things to make a better service, and actually, I think that, you know, I, I know a little bit about the wind loading of these towers and how they, they work, and we've actually taken weight off the tower compared to where it was at when we started, so I, you know, I wasn't aware that there was any, you know, I guess I wasn't under the impression that we would have to go through this process when we started. Had I known, you know, fully that what, you know, what was in tail, I would have probably done the engineering upfront, but essentially, you know, if it's just a one-to-one comparison, the tower today versus the towers a year ago, there's actually less weight on them, because 2020 had actually installed like a lot of equipment that needed to be at the bottom of the tower on the top, so we moved it down, we switched to smaller dishes, you know, we've actually like reduced it, but, I mean, just, just in theory, you've got a water tower that holds about eight to 12 million pounds of water, and we're talking about putting 100 pounds worth of equipment on it. You know, of course, it's on the outside, and there's wind loading to worry about, but it's not really a significant impact on the towers, I mean, this is just generally speaking. Of course, the engineers will, you know, will have to agree with that, but it's a very small number, we're talking about, you know, adding in weight.
Thank you. That satisfies the questions that I've asked, and I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Is there any other council question? I have one other one. Mr. Campbell, you know, we wanted to do live streaming of our council meetings, will this capacity now be enabled to, enable us to do that? Could you have Mr. Sean?
I'll have to concur, or I have to refer that to our IT, to Chris, and we can talk about that.
Okay, but that's been long on our list to, I don't know if that would be possible, I don't know if you know that we would have capacity.
Well, we, you know, we, we have the capacity, just to give you an idea of what we can do now, we can, we can do like 100-meg symmetrical connections off the tower, so, I don't know, sometimes I say that, and like, nobody knows what that is, but, like, literally, like, the fastest internet connection you've ever seen, we can deliver to anywhere in Celine now, you know, and without the kind of, you know, without building fiber, without doing T1 connections, I mean, literally, you know, overnight, we could deliver that to any location.
So, so what are the problems? Why are people doing fiber, fiber on the ground?
Well, fiber's, you know, the ultimate connection, I mean, still, nothing-
Because there's more capacity.
Well, fiber is a high, well, these days, it's almost not, I mean, there's actually radios out nowadays that'll do a full gigabit or more of capacity at this kind, a couple mile distance, so it's almost like we're butting heads, I mean, fiber is a little bit more, you know, if I had the choice of having wireless or fiber, you know, ultimately, if, you know, if all things were equal, I'd pick fiber, but fiber also takes a long time to install, you know, you're also talking about easements and going through zoning and, you know, like underground conduits and things like that, as where wireless is just a little more cut and dried. So, you know, we find, I mean, we've got some pretty, you know, just to give you an idea, we've got some pretty big customers, like in, you know, some of our other markets running on this as a primary connection, now, like, we, you know, we've secured some, you know, some rather large portion, you know, type, you know, larger companies are moving to this kind of product just because of the ease of getting it, you know, and the install cost, and the overall cost is usually lower. So, it is, is becoming more and more, you know, prominent.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Rhodes?
Just one, because I'm real smart about this stuff, but I'm assuming this is a system primarily designed for computers and not for cell phones? primarily designed for computers and not for cell phones?
Oh, yeah, it's, okay, good point, yeah. So we're using the same kind of technology that cellular companies have, but we're using it to deliver just for homes and businesses. So it won't be compatible with a cellphone directly. I mean, you could, of course, you know, run, if your cellphone runs Wi-Fi and you have one of our connections and you connect to the Wi-Fi, yes, you could do it that way. But yes, this is actually a primary, this is a wireline replacement service. So this is designed to take out, you know, phone lines with running Internet DSL, fiber, things like that. It's actually designed as a replacement for that.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Girba?
Out of curiosity, how far does your range reach out beyond the city?
Well, we can do like microwave point-to-points, we'll do 10, 20, 30 miles, you know? That's a, that's a fixed dish on both ends, you know, line of sight from one end to the other. So if we have line of sight, you know, here in Celine, we don't have a tremendous line of sight, obviously, because it's a shorter tower, you know, but I've done links before like in, you know, in other areas that I operated in that are 20 miles or more, you know, and with reliability.
Yeah, looking at benefits for our other townships that surround us. I know there are a lot of citizens that would appreciate that type of service too.
Yeah, well, we've got, yeah, we've got a lot of, you know, we, overall, like with the acquisition of 2020, we have about 600 customers in Washington County, you know? So we've got, a lot of the other locations are running the 900 megahertz system, which is more of a penetration through trees. So like a lot of places, we're the only choice, you know, of people and so they use that, that type of service just to get, you know, basic connectivity as well.
Great. Any further questions? So when are you planning on rolling out your service?
Well, we've already done all the backup, like all the hard stuff, you know? We just kind of were waiting to have the meeting to talk about that. You know, we, we're pretty much, we want to deploy something here that's, you know, good for businesses and residential use. So we're hoping to do it in the spring or later this winter. We're just going to be, I mean, all the hard work is done. It's just real, you know, literally, we've managed to get it in a little bit at a time and now we just need to, you know, make a purchase and deploy it and start advertising, so...
Okay, thank you. Further discussion on the motion? All in favor to approve and authorize, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Under 1118, the fee book revisions, annual review request, this is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 17, 2011 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel to approve or not approve the proposed revisions to the fee book as recommended to become effective immediately. Do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Second. Mr. Marle? This is a motion to approve, correct? Okay. Mr. Rubel?
Thank you, Mayor. Every year at this time, staff finishes up its review of the numerous items in the fee book, fee book which you saw online maybe, is about a 26-page document, includes fees of every department. And so there's usually a few that need updating or out of date or need some type of adjustment for increase or decrease. So this is a result of this year's requests from the various departments. I don't know if you want me to outline these again or if you have specific questions, then I don't have to go through every one.
Any questions for Sydney?
Anything?
Mr. Rubel? Mr. Ivey?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rubel, I reviewed these fee book changes and I had no problem with all of them except for part B. And I was hoping you could help me understand the significant increases in both the building zoning verification letters and the part two, the building and construction compliance. It seems like a rather substantial increase in both cases.
Unfortunately, those both were severely out of date and when we checked with the area communities, they were all either at that fee or higher than that fee. And so we had been pretty low on the scale and so it might have been fine when you're doing 110 houses a year, but we just don't have the, the production we used to. So it's better now to get the fees up to a realistic value before, you know, we hit the next housing boom and you're still out of line. So we are bringing these up to date because they're long overdue.
Thank you. I admire your optimism.
Yes, we did have 11 new permits issued last year, so that was good.
Any further questions for Mr. Rubel? Thank you, Mr. Rubel.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to approve? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And 1119, Cemetery Task Force Committee Report for Oakwood Cemetery and the Expansion of Burial Spaces Within the Existing Oakwood Cemetery. First motion is to acknowledge receipt of the January 14, 2011 Cemetery Task Force Committee Report and the January 14, 2011 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Second.
Marle, second, Girba. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion to authorize or not authorize staff to proceed with the expansions of Divisions 53 and 54 of the existing Oakwood Cemetery. Authorizing staff to have the property surveyed and to send out RFP for this project as outlined in the memo, with the cost for expansion to come back to council for consideration. Do we have a motion?
Move to authorize.
Ivey, second, Rhodes. Discussion. Mr. Marle?
I would just like to speak briefly. As a member of the Oakwood Cemetery Task Force, that this motion and the subsequent motion, I strongly endorse and encourage my colleagues to vote in the affirmative. Based on my service on the Oakwood Cemetery Task Force, I believe that what we're recommending tonight, excuse me, is a good compromise between two sets of thought. The first of which being that we should get out of the traditional cemetery business and simply provide people with a, a mechanism by which to store cremains. I personally am of that opinion and, and the group that would maintain that we should stay in the cemetery business, the traditional cemetery business in perpetuity. And so this, this recommendation report, the memorandum that's submitted by the task force, but specifically by Mr. Rubel, there was a lot of time, a lot of thought, a lot of resources invested in it. And I know Mr. Ivey could probably echo many of my remarks, but I want to thank his service. He was the one who actually compiled most of the data, which you'll find in the back of your memorandum regarding cemetery capacity in the county. But I also wanted to thank the city manager, city and superintendent Rubel, and then Chief Clerk Hill and Deputy Clerk Lindemore for providing perspective and insight on this task force as well. I think overall, we did some good work and I think the, the report and the recommendation is, is very thorough and, and very appropriate.
Mr. Ivey?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like indeed to echo the comments made by Mayor Protem Marle. And I would like to also point out, as, as my honorable friend, Mr. Marle, would agree that the decision that the task force eventually reached was a data-driven decision. And we were very careful not to be subjective and we used not only the compilation of information from various other cemetery locations in the county, but also results from the city survey that was conducted in the fall last year and also results from a follow-up to that survey in the FYI newsletter. So this is something I also urge all my colleagues to support. Thank you.
Further discussion on this motion? Mr. Marle?
One more thing if I could add, Mayor, thank you. Mr. Ivey is absolutely right, this was a data-driven decision. We looked at a significant amount of research and data before rendering opinion. In addition to that, I would hope that when staff comes back to us for the approval of cost relating to this motion and the subsequent one, that some serious consideration and thought be made as to funding these projects with dollars, not from the general fund, but from the perpetual care fund. I know we talked about that and kind of tap danced around it at the, at the task force meetings, but considering the amount of money that is in the perpetual care fund and considering the amount of stress which is on our general fund, I think it's more than prudent. So that would be my recommendation and my hope that staff seriously considers that and makes an appropriate recommendation when the time is prudent. Thank you.
Further discussion on this motion? I would also like to commend the task force for their hard work. This is a very thorough report. I would suggest and recommend that the report be put on our website because I know while we may have a data-driven decision about to be presented or being presented to us, it is also an emotional issue for people that live in this community. Therefore, I think it'd be a good idea, would be a good idea to make sure that everybody else understands why we came to the decision that we've come to at this point in time. And I think there will have to be another review in the future, but at this point in time, I am supportive of the task force recommendation, so...
I would also hope, excuse me, Mayor, that something could be maybe put in one of the upcoming FYIs.
Sure we will.
Access our website, but value the information nevertheless.
Yeah, but this is, you know, the whole depth of it, we can't fit in that.
Right, but a synopsis. Absolutely.
I know that we've talked about doing that, continue to inform the public, excuse me. Okay, so is there further discussion on this motion, which is to authorize, to proceed with expansion of the divisions of 53 and 54? Further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then our third motion is to authorize or not authorize staff to request bids for the purchase of cremation niches to be installed in the alcove area of the existing mausoleum with the bids to come back to council for consideration.
Move to authorize.
Second.
Marle, second, Ivey to authorize. Mr. Girba?
I'm waiting, a discussion?
What?
I'm waiting for a discussion.
Oh, that's what I just said, is there...
Okay, sorry. Just a question on the, with installing the, the alcoves and issues in the mausoleum, are we including some cost to address the problems with the door and some of the access into it? Because I've heard concerns with those.
Yeah, actually, we're hoping to get that door repaired before we do that. But if not, for some reason, yes, absolutely, at a minimum, would be included in that, if not sooner.
I didn't know if we needed to include it with this motion or not to make sure that that was approved.
Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Ivey?
Just a statement that the task force, I believe, the consensus of the force is firmly committed to preserving the mausoleum and expanding it as much as possible. And I think that's right for the cemetery and right for the city.
Further discussion on the motion? All in favor to authorize, say, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under discussion, we have commission committee reports from council members. Mr. Rhodes, oh, go ahead, Mr. Rhodes.
Okay, the environmental commission met last week and we elected Cornelius Crawford to chair that commission and then Marcia Belair to be vice chair and have decided that we will devote our February meeting to visioning and goal-setting and then our March meeting to preparing our budget request to be submitted to the city. It's a, it's an exciting group, there's a bunch of great people on there and they're, we're all looking forward to contributing to the continuing efforts within the city to improve our, our use of environmental resources and being kind to our planet. So we also have an advisory group made up of individuals who have an interest in the environment, but who are not part of the official seven members of the commission. And we have invited them to attend our meetings in a non-voting capacity, of course, and to serve as a base of volunteers for events that we might put on. Thank you.
Mr. Law?
The Celtic Festival is getting into gear for this year. Some of the points that, that they've made and some of the things that they're going to be pursuing include not having a festival chair for this year, instead having a committee run the festival, not falling onto one person. The ticket prices, they say, will be the same as it was last year. They plan to present this and other information in their budget, which they will present to council, I believe, sometime next month. They're also proposing to replace the parade, a 5K run. That is certainly in the works and it's very preliminary right now, but that's what they're looking at, at doing. And having some sort of mini parade or gathering some show that they want to present to the opening ceremonies, sort of jazz things up a bit, make them a little more, I don't know, more involved, I guess, I guess you could say. So those are things that are happening right now on the Celtic Festival. Planning Commission, we met last week, I think, and we agreed to extend the site plan of the banks of Celine by another year. As many on council, if not everyone knows, the banks of Celine has been in a difficult situation with litigation and legal situations concerning Johnson Controls and the cleanup of that site and they've been unable to pursue development of that site because of that. And so the planning commission agreed to extend it to another year in hopes that the issues surrounding the legal aspects of this will be resolved within short time, but that's hope anyway. And that's all I have. I, Mayor, I'll, I'll come back to the Winter Fest if you wish, after others have said anything about their committees.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ivey?
Thank you, Mayor. The Celine Parks Commission met on January 18th, was the first meeting of the new year and was mostly dedicated to organizational matters and to informing new commissioners about their roles. The commission re-elected Commissioner Angela Van Scoyke as chair, Christopher Loftus as vice chair, and it welcomed its two new park commissioners, Elena Hess and Michael Johnson. Meeting dates for the rest of the year were set and commissioners were assigned their specific parks to watch over and report on, on a monthly basis. The Parks Commission will meet again on February 15th at 7:30 right here at City Hall and I invite all citizens who are interested in our city parks and who use them and who are interested in improving them to come to our meeting. Thank you.
Any other commissioner, committee reports? Reports, Mr. Councilor Law, you want to talk about the Winter Fest that's going on?
Yeah, Winter Fest is on Saturday and starts at nine, nine o'clock with the opening ceremony down at the parking lot where the farmer's market is. 5K run follows after that and there'll be ice carving, there'll be ice skating and skating demonstrations, I believe, as well. And I guess all the events are, are really key, but there's the most important ones, the snowman, snowman building competition, which Celine is participating with three other cities, Zeeland, Sault Ste. Marie and St. Clair. And so we are asking, and I'm asking for anyone to come on out who has got a shovel and not afraid to lift some snow into a, some garbage cans or some pails and build as many snowmen as possible, I think, in a two-hour period.
Starting at one, right?
What's that again?
Starts, that starts at one.
Starts at one in Hennifield, thank you. And that will, that caps the, the festival because that's, that's going to be hopefully a fun competition and hopefully Celine will come on top. The, the weather person, weather man has cooperated as far as the snow is concerned, thankfully. And, and hopefully it'll be cold enough that it will stay around. So I invite everyone to come on out, it's going to be a lot of fun and hope for, again, a good day.
Any other reports or announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
Celine Leadership Institute, class number 13, graduated last Thursday in these very chambers. And what the final activity that they did was each participant created a talking stick. And one of them happened to leave theirs behind, so I'm going to get it back to them. But if you want to know what this is and how to use it, you're going to have to come to Celine Leadership Institute the next class. We will start recruiting for that group within two or three weeks. And we do have a website, celineleadershipinstitute.org, all spelled out, one word. It's a long URL. Or you can see me and we do have some new brochures that have been printed up. So Celine Leadership Institute, it's a, it's a great activity to go through, lasts for, for one year, one day a month.
Any other announcements? I'll take Paul a comment now in the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come for it this time, make a comment or question to the city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested by not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Is there any other business coming before the city council? If not, our next meeting will be on February 14. If not, our next meeting will be on February 7th at 7:30 PM. We are, we do need a motion to convene into closed session for the purpose of discussing a confidential attorney opinion. The City Council will not reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session. Do we have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
And we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember La?
Yes.